Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled board meeting on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. We are calling the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Can we please call the roll? Oh, sorry, Sultana. I was so focused on starting at 7:00. Sorry. Thank you. Can we please call the roll when you have a second?
Mrs. Urbanides?
Here.
Mrs. Assef?
Here.
Mrs. Hostler?
Here.
Mrs. Troutman?
Here.
Dr. Henry?
Here.
Mrs. Lewinsky?
Here.
Mr. Bresnahan?
Here.
Great. We have seven board members present and zero absent. Can we please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay, we're going to jump right into our spotlights and recognitions. On the agenda this evening, we have the High School Math Proclamation. Jennifer Nolan, welcome.
Good evening. So each year through the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, the Presidency of the United States recognizes outstanding educators from across the country who teach science, technology, engineering, or mathematics at either an elementary or secondary grade level. Recipients of the Presidential Award represent the best of STEM education, demonstrating deep content knowledge of the subjects they teach and the ability to motivate and enable student success. More than 5,200 awardees have been recognized since the program was established by Congress in 1983. The award winners reflect the expertise and dedication of the nation's STEM Teaching Corps, and they demonstrate the positive impact of excellent teachers on student achievement. Jenna serves as the Math Department Coordinator at York and has also been teaching IAM in algebra for the last two years. She has led the department through bringing math to life through the IAM structure. And Dr. Hurt was not able to attend tonight, but she asked me to share some thoughts that she sent along about Jenna. So Jenna is a rock star and consistently seeks new ways to connect students with math. She is committed to the professional growth of her colleagues as well. She even made a video series for her colleagues and invited them into her class to see how she was navigating this new curriculum. I'm deeply grateful for how she stepped up when her Division Chair was on maternity leave last this past year. She is a very well-deserving of this honor. So I will invite the board member to come and read your proclamation.
Congratulations, Jenna. I'm going to read the proclamation from the board. Whereas the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, P-A-E-M-S-T, represent the highest honor bestowed upon the United States government specifically for K-12, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and/or computer science teaching. And whereas Jenna Nolan, an outstanding educator at York High School, was selected for consideration for this prestigious recognition in the area of mathematics education. And whereas in March 2025, Jenna Nolan was named one of the only three state-level finalists from Illinois in mathematics, an exceptional achievement that reflects her dedication, expertise, and excellence in instruction. And whereas Ms. Nolan was recently honored at an award ceremony recognizing P-A-E-M-S-T finalists and their significant contributions to advancing STEM education in our schools. And whereas her commitment to fostering a love of learning and strengthening mathematical understanding among her students exemplifies the values of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205. Now therefore be it resolved that the Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 Board of Education proudly recognizes Jenna Nolan for her outstanding achievement as a finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, and extends its heartfelt congratulations and appreciation for her exemplary service to her students and the community. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Nolan. The district certainly is honored to have you here working with us and our students. Moving on to Item B, Jackson Elementary School Spotlight. Come on up.
Well, good evening. Thank you so much for having me. I have to tell you that after finishing my first year as Principal of Jackson, that this truly has been the most rewarding and joyful experience of my career. So I am really excited to share with you tonight some of the ways that I think, some of the things that I think make Jackson extra special. All right. So the first thing I would love to highlight is our commitment to a tremendous academic experience. Of course, this begins with our high-quality curricular materials, which I don't think I can underscore enough what a gift those are. But what's really amazing is it doesn't stop there. So here you can see a cardiothoracic surgeon demonstrating a heart dissection for our fourth graders, which is, which connects to our Witten Wisdom Unit on the figurative and literal heart. I don't know about you, but when I think about learning coming to life, I'm not sure that you could come up with a better example. So truly amazing to see this in action. And as you can imagine, students really loved this experience. Okay. The next area I would love to highlight is the tremendous learning that not only occurs for students at Jackson, but also for our staff. At Jackson, we're a learning organization, and we believe that to our core. And I'm continually amazed by the incredible teachers that I get to work with every day. A lot, and alongside them, we continue to learn and grow every day. This past year, teachers chose an inquiry based on our Eureka Math Curriculum. So here you can see a strategic partnership of kinder and second-grade teachers who were both doing an inquiry around models and representations and how those show up, both in the continuum from K to 2. So again, to me, what I see in this picture is a group of adults who are committed to being vulnerable with each other, who are committed to learning in service of our students having an incredibly high-quality education. Hold on. Okay. One of my favorite things to highlight at Jackson is our supportive and inclusive learning environment. So it was hard to choose two pictures for me to show this, but I picked two of my favorites. On the left, you can see what's called a PE takeover. This is when the Lincoln Way Special Recreation Association facilitates this experience for students to experience what it's like to be in an adaptive PE setting. So students are playing volleyball in wheelchairs. They're kneeling and practicing what that would be like. So obviously, the experience itself is amazing, but what I loved the most was listening to students reflect after and talk about what does it really mean to include students at Jackson, no matter what their ability level is. The other picture you can see here, so when I think about a supportive and inclusive learning environment, I also think about educating the whole child. And so there are academics, which are incredibly important, but then how do we light that fire of excitement around other things like music? So one of my favorite days, I will admit, as a former trombone player in high school, not a good one, was watching our students, our fourth graders, explore musical instruments. So we got to go from station to station. We were playing different instruments. And I think they're, one of the gifts of elementary school is seeing certain kids find that thing that sparks, that really sparks joy. And this was certainly a day that that happened at Jackson, and I really believe that a lot of those students will go on to live, to be musicians throughout their lives. Finally, very near and dear to my heart, and I'm excited to share about what we call our Jackson Promises. So when I first arrived at Jackson, some feedback that I got from staff and students was that there was a desire to have a positive approach to school-wide expectations. And so as teachers and as students, we went on this journey of saying, what, what do we really promise as Jackson Jaguars? And we came up with that we promise to be safe and to be kind and to work hard. And so in the middle, you can see those promises, lots of conversations about what that looks like in different spaces throughout the school, at recess, at gym, even in the bathroom, how we make sure that we're always keeping our Jackson Promises. And then we also make sure that we celebrate students who consistently demonstrate those promises or show specific improvement around those promises. So you can see a couple of our award winners who are incredibly proud to win a Jackson Promises Award. And I would just add anecdotally, I don't have hard data on this, but when people visit Jackson, I often receive feedback about the feeling that you have when you walk around, the joy, maybe even the magic that you feel. And I attribute that to our, our staff and our students really rallying around this idea of what it means to keep our promises as Jackson Jaguars. And so with that, I do want to just take an intentional moment to say a sincere thank you to the Board of Education, to Dr. Campbell, to the Cabinet members for this incredible opportunity and for the constant and unwavering support that I receive as a principal. It really is true what educational researchers say, that good leadership is not done in silos. It is done with the collaboration, support, and encouragement of those around us. And I'm so incredibly fortunate to be surrounded by the very best, and I'm thankful every day to be here. Thank you.
Well, thank you for a great presentation, but also congratulations on making it through your first year. We know what that feels like, and we're happy to see everything that's going on at Jackson and what is still to come. So thank you for your hard work and dedication also. We will move on to Sandberg since Mr. Lewis is ready up there. You are next, sir. It is all you. Sandberg Middle School Spotlight, all yours.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board of Education members, district administration, and the greater D205 community. I'm honored to share highlights from the 24-25 school year at Sandberg, but first want to thank Jackson and all our elementary colleagues for the incredible foundation that they build. That was an inspiring presentation. It's always, we feel very fortunate to receive such amazing students from our elementary feeders. So, but as far as Sandberg goes, as I reflect on my second year as Principal at Sandberg, I continue to be inspired by the talent, dedication, and resources leveraged for our greater school community. Through listening to our amazing students, families, and staff, along with frequent observations made by administration, coaches, department chairs, teachers, we focused on foundational elements of our work in order to elevate instructional practices and student success. It was about partnership, consistency, reflection, and showing up each day with care and purpose. Together, we grounded our work in what matters the most, our students' experience and outcomes. At Sandberg, we understand that meaningful school improvement doesn't happen in isolation. It happens through intentional work to elevate all stakeholders' voices. This year's theme, Be Better at the Basics, guided our commitment to listening deeply and responding thoughtfully to the people who make our school community, our parents, our staff, and our students. Parents partnered with us through structures like our Parent Advocacy Group, offering valuable insights and perspectives that inform school-wide improvements and strengthen our homeschool collaboration. Staff leaned into shared learning, opening their classrooms and reflecting together as a way to grow collectively and better support our students. Students shared honest feedback about their learning environments, their needs, and what helps them feel connected. Their voices led to changes in how we build relationships, offer support, and celebrate success. As you see in the next few slides, this progress is rooted not just in high-quality instructional materials, although those are important, don't get me wrong, but also in our partnerships. Family engagement continued to grow this year through our Parent Advocacy Group, as I mentioned before. What started as informal conversations evolved into consistent trusted space for families to ask questions and share feedback and engage in dialogue about how to strengthen the Sandberg experience. We tackled meaningful topics such as routines, communication systems, curriculum implementation, and made real adjustments based on parent input. The group didn't just advise, they partnered with us. And they helped us ensure, and will continue to help us ensure, that our practices reflect the needs of the full community. As a staff, we've always valued student recognition at Sandberg, but this year we expanded and elevated how we celebrate our students. Every week, grade-level teams nominated students who demonstrated our core values, including responsibility, courage, integrity, and kindness. Each celebration included a public recognition, a certificate, a personal call home from a staff member, and an entry into a weekly prize drawing. These recognitions reminded students that who they are and how they treat others matters deeply to us. This year marked the implementation of Amplify ELA and Illustrated Mathematics across all grade levels at Sandberg. These new curricular adoptions brought depth, rigor, and renewed focus on high-quality instructional materials and practices, and our staff exceeded our initial expectations, internalizing not only our curriculum, but the reflective structures that deepen our shared understanding. One highlight, as I alluded to in the previous slide, was the lesson internalization work embraced by our outstanding math and ELA teachers. Sandberg teachers opened their classrooms to peers, collaboratively unpacked units, and engaged in pre-observation planning and post-observation debriefs. We were honored to have Dr. Kelly Henry and Mr. Collins join us during one of those internalizations and classroom observations. Their presence and partnership emphasized the importance of this work, and their insights affirmed the level of professionalism and instructional strength within our teaching teams. Even with two board members, three district administrators, and what felt like several cameras on our staff, we continued the essential work of understanding this new curriculum at a depth which allows them to increasingly meet all of our student academic needs. This model of internalization, teachers supporting teachers, with district leadership walking alongside us, helped bring Amplify and Illustrated Mathematics to life in a way that felt both rigorous and supportive. Lastly, and most importantly, we have centered student voices in everything we do. We began this school year by giving students ownership in shaping how we treat one another. In addition to our kickoff assembly, which was both a celebration of our school community and a reminder of who we are as Spartans, our values, our expectations, grade-level teams led early FLL sessions focused on co-creating school-wide agreements that reflected students' values and priorities. This process helped ground our community in shared expectations and reminded students that their voice drives our culture. At Sandberg, we recognize the strong student-teacher relationships are foundational to student success. This year, we moved beyond standalone SEL lessons and worked to embed social-emotional learning into daily instruction. This integration helped teachers connect with students authentically and build greater trust in their classrooms. We also launched a series of student surveys to elevate student voice. The feedback helped us adjust classroom practices, refine routines, and better support students' sense of belonging and engagement. It was a meaningful feedback loop. Students spoke, and we responded. As the school year progressed, our student leaders leveraged their voices in increasingly visible and impactful ways. A new format of announcements called Spartan TV brought to life through familiar and accessible video format, the staff and students partnering to bring updates and reminders to our Sandberg school community. Our staff continues to be better at the basics by listening closely, showing up consistently, and creating classroom environments built on care, clarity, and mutual respect. At every level, classroom, hallway, office, Sandberg's strength lies in its people. Our staff models what it means to care deeply, act with consistently, and strives to hold one another to high expectations. Whether it's rallying behind a student in need, mentoring a colleague, or showing up early to prepare for the day, our culture is built on collective responsibility. That's what being better at the basics means in practice, and we see it every day. As we enter the summer months and prepare for a new school year, I'm filled with gratitude for this community. The progress we've made together has been real, and it's only the beginning. Thank you for believing in our students, our teachers, our shared vision for Sandberg. I can't wait to see how we continue to connect to impact through collaborative work, relationship building, and research-based practice in 2025-26. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, for the presentation and your efforts in leading the campus of Sandberg Middle School. We will now move on to the public comment portion of our board meeting. Public comment section of the board meeting provides an opportunity for community members to share information and perspectives with the Board of Education. And while the board does not respond during public comments, we are listening and thoughtfully considering the messages being shared. Each of us have high expectations for our community, and we ask that public comments are respectful and do not mention any individuals by name. The way in which we publicly engage when sharing differing perspectives is an opportunity to model healthy and respectful discourse for our students and greater community while creating an environment of collaboration and partnership. There will be up to 30 minutes allocated for public comments, with up to three minutes per public comment speaker concerning items on this agenda. The board secretary will give a reminder when you have 30 seconds left. We can begin with our first speaker.
Karen Cullen Meyer.
Thank you. I'm not, I'm shorter. Okay, thank you. Hello. My name is Karen Cullen Meyer, and I have lived, voted, and paid taxes in Elmhurst for the past 25 years. For the past four years, I have been a PSRP at York High School. My plan is not to return in August. My education and background have been as a school social worker, but due to circumstances before and after COVID, being a PSRP suited my needs. My son was an Emerson Eagle, a Churchill Charger, and a York Duke, graduating in what I call the class that was not 2020. When I would ask him how things were going at York, he would say, Mom, I can't explain it. You just have to be there. That was my motivation to becoming a York PSRP, but having spent the last four years there, I now understand what he meant. I decided to bring my concerns from working at York to the school board meeting earlier this year. The superintendent met with me in the next room, and after hearing me out, assured me that I could speak to the board if that is what I wanted to do. She also asked me to meet with both her and the board president first to give me the opportunity to hear my concerns and work together to address them. That seemed like a more productive way to approach the issues, so we agreed to meet. I initially met with the principal and came up with three possible approaches I would present to the superintendent and the board president. I can't use your name, so sorry. I truly appreciated the time and how quickly we were able to get together. My meeting with the superintendent and the board president was productive, as I explained what I had seen over the past four years, and gave the three steps that the principal and I agreed the board could take to improve what was happening at York, pretty much on a daily basis. We left the meeting with the understanding that the board would follow up with the principal, and spent some time looking at what was happening at the school. I had one more meeting with the principal and sent an email to the superintendent, the board president, and the principal before the end of the school year. Since then, I've heard many rumors as to what may or may not happen at York for the 2025-26 school year. The time for construction conversations are now over. I've heard a wise person continually say, watch what they do, not what they say. So now it's time
30 seconds.
for this board to do what is necessary to make York a priority. We have the resources, although not limitless. I have observed over the years, when an issue is a priority for the board, the resources are found. It is unacceptable to use the rob Peter and pay Paul approach, which is what could happen at York. How a school is staff should not solely rely on the number of students, but more on the needs of the school. Taking staff from one job to change them to another is not an effective intervention. York is an amazing
That's three minutes.
and the students at staff deserve it for be the best that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle McCardle.
I am not quite as short. Good evening. My name's Michelle McCardle. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. I'm a Lincoln parent, and I'm here to speak out again on the decision to remove a section of third grade for the 25-26 school year, which will increase classroom sizes from 20 to 26 or 27. The voters in this community passed a $168 million referendum in 2018 to improve our school district. $30 million of that was used to build Lincoln, with four classrooms in each grade level. The school has only been open for three years, and I am concerned that we are reducing sections already. And more broadly, why are our classroom sizes becoming so large across the entire district? Data from Illinois Report Card shows that the state average is 20 kids per classroom in K-5, so clearly 26 to 27 kids is well above this. We are also one of the wealthiest districts in the state, but we have the worst financial ranking. School rankings usually correlate with funding, but the district's 2024 financial report touts over $3.3 billion in assessed valuation of property. $146 million, which accounts to 84% of this district's operating revenue, comes from property taxes. So I believe it's important that we as a community understand what's driving this poor financial ranking. I've been told that it's being blamed simply on an accounting change, but we were put on early warning in 2023 and then downgraded again to watch status in 2024. The prior Finance Committee's chairman stated before his recent departure that he believed ongoing deficits in the operating budget were a big reason for the credit rating agency's downgrade. According to the Illinois School Board of Education, 92% of districts in this state were at the top level. We are at the bottom. Per the district's annual report, staffing is the largest part of the expenditure budget. We are reducing sections in our schools and increasing classroom sizes when maybe we should be hiring teachers. So is there a problem with the operating budget? Last year, the board voted for a $7.5 million tax levy, so we're paying more than ever in property taxes. Elmhurst is a popular choice for young families, and we all know the main factor is where to raise a family is quality schools. We need smaller classroom sizes, and we need accountability for this poor financial ranking. Thank you for your time.
Dara Agris. Agris?
Hi, my name is Dara Agris. You're close. So I am also a parent of students at Lincoln, and I'm also deeply concerned about the rising class sizes in our district, and I'm not alone. So thank you to all the parents who showed up today to show support. We have a petition with 480 signatures that have been signed by parents who are looking to reinstate an extra class section of grade levels in the elementary schools that exceed 24. Increasing class sizes does a disservice to the students and the teachers. This started out as a Lincoln thing for me because that was all I was aware of, but it kind of took on a life of its own. So for example, at Lincoln, our class sizes in second grade last year were 20. For third grade, they're supposed to jump to 27. What this means is that students are going to get less individualized attention, fewer opportunities to participate, and less support. Third grade is a formative year where children transition from learning to read, from learning to read to reading to learn, and this plays a really important part, class size. Our teachers already go above and beyond. Increasing their workload by 30% in a classroom is not only unsustainable but unfair. I'm a former educator myself. I taught third and fourth grade for 12 years. So when I hear this information, I look at it from the standpoint of what would my day look like if I went from having 20 kids day look like if I went from having 20 kids, or even 22, to 27? The difference is night and day. When I think about, okay, how is my ELA block going to be? How is it going to be structured? Okay, I'm going to go from doing my whole group lesson to when I'm doing guided reading groups with the small groups, okay, I have 27 kids now, how many groups? Okay, now I have five groups, potentially six, so how many minutes less is every single group going to get now that I have to meet with that extra, potentially, seven kids? All it comes down to is less minutes of individual attention that those students are going to get. I've heard that teachers matter more than class size. I couldn't agree more. I think having quality teachers who are well-trained is the most important piece, in addition to all of the other things like quality curriculum. But if you take that same-
Thirty seconds.
-well-trained teacher, and you give them 22 kids versus 27, there's a lot more they can do. Think of all of those extra touchpoints that they are going to give with all of those kids. Our administration and our board are here to serve the community. The community is really clear about what we want. We value small class sizes. There seems to be, all these numbers being thrown around about how much money is in the budget or not-
Three minutes.
-we are looking for you to find some money to put towards lowering our class sizes.
Thank you to everyone who took the time to voice their concerns, support, or perspectives to the Board of Education. Common practice of the board is to follow up with public commenters after the board meeting as needed. We'll now move on to our next item on our agenda, which is the public hearing for the Flexible Learning Plan. We are declaring the public meeting open related to our Flexible Learning Plan, and I will turn it over to Mr. Gomez.
Thank you. The purpose of the public hearing is to inform the board and community of District 205's Flexible Learning Plan renewal process. This renewal is required by the Illinois State Board of Education every three years. District 205 received approval of the Flexible Learning Plan in 2022 and is now required to be renewed. District 205's Flexible Learning Plan ensures continuity of instruction by offering a virtual learning option when in-person attendance is not possible, particularly due to inclement weather. You may review the Flexible Learning Plan that is available on our website under Resources for the community to take a look. And that's our plan.
Thank you. Are there any public comments related specifically to the Flexible Learning Plan? Okay. Hearing no public comments, we now declare that hearing closed. And we'll move on to item five, which is the approval of board meeting minutes. Item A, are there any changes to the minutes listed there for the regular board meeting and special board meeting minutes from May 20th, May 28th, and June 11th? See, June what? Oh, June 11th, yeah. Okay, seeing none, sorry, those meetings stand as presented, and the approval of closed session meeting minutes, May 20th, May 28th, and June 11th also stand as presented. Moving on to reports and presentations, our first report and presentation tonight comes from the Learning and Teaching Department and their annual update.
Okay, thank you. I'm joined by my colleague, Amy Baker Zaleski, who is our Assistant Director of Language, Pathways, and Programs. So I'll get us kicked off, and then I will hand it over to Amy for a dual-language, elementary school dual-language update. Here is what we're going to highlight in our Learning and Teaching update tonight. We want to highlight our instructional priorities that grounded our work this year, as well as the professional learning that we engaged in. We're going to highlight our Leadership Collaborative Learning Series, and then I will hand it to Amy to highlight our elementary dual-language overview, both the curricular supports as well as the professional learning efforts. We'll kind of end the time together, talking through our continuous improvement efforts and the impact on student outcomes that we've seen through those intentional efforts. And then we'll highlight the shifts that we're making as we reflect on our professional learning for next year. You've seen this slide before, the road is getting quite busy, which is very exciting as we really ensure that our students have access to high-quality curricular resources at all levels within all content areas. We heard both of our principals today mention what a gift our curricular resources are, and so this is really what grounds our work as we think about how we professionally develop our teachers in terms of the materials that we put in front of our students. And so to provide an overview, these are the instructional priorities that we have engaged and focused in on with our school and leadership teams since 2023. They are multi-year instructional priorities that ground our work. It is how the Learning and Teaching and the Student Success Team, the directors, ground their work and spend their time. Particularly, what we'll hear about today is our focus on the bilingual instructional priorities, and Amy will highlight that. You've also seen this graphic before, but this represents the number of engagements in terms of our professional learning at a variety of different levels and with different stakeholders. So at the top, kind of outermost circle, you see a number of building professional learning communities in department meetings across the district. And then kind of moving into the next, building leadership coaching sessions, we've had 97 of those across the district. We've had 44 teacher learning communities, bringing educators from across the district together in strategic professional learning. We have those leadership collaboratives, 30 of those this year, that I'm going to highlight one series tonight on, and then four institute days. In terms of our leadership collaboratives, we have, we had a series of learning together, three-part learning together series that focused in on our math instructional priority. Particularly, this series focused on leveraging our curriculum to building understanding, which is really a focus on sense-making versus answer-getting. And this was targeted to our kindergarten to 12th grade leadership teams, instructional coaches, teachers, and really division chairs and department chairs. And really, the outcome of this series was to ensure that our leaders were better equipped to lead their math teams. I know you've seen this triangle before, but this is our, the levers that we really pull on in terms of school improvement and making sure that the entire instructional leadership team is both able to execute instruction, as well as give feedback on instruction that meet the demands of grade-level standards, and provide opportunities for students for enrichment and intervention that coherently link standards within and across grades. So those were the focus, that was the focus area for our instructional leadership teams this year. And this is just a brief overview of the feedback that we heard from leaders on that series, that we really take into account as we think about what's next for our teams. And we really asked the question from leaders of how that professional learning was empowering them to advance outcomes in math. And one of the big buckets was strategic implementation and instructional alignment. And so we heard from leaders that this series of learning really helped them think about what the learning, teaching, and learning cycles look like in their building, and how, as you heard our principal at Sandberg, Josh, talk about how we think about that internalization process. We may have materials, but it's how we execute using those materials that's really important. And so those improved instructional planning practices coming from deeply learning the content ourselves as leaders. In two other buckets, we heard trends from our leaders around highlighting collaboration and professional culture, really honoring the fact that we are a learning organization, and we want to do that through collaboration. And then feedback and coaching capacity, this was, we had a lot of trends in terms of the feedback that, that leaders felt that this is an area that they felt that they really grew in, in terms of using aligned observational tools and frameworks, which then in turn helped them provide really aligned feedback to their teachers around our math instructional priority. And so with that, I'm going to have Amy spotlight one of the strategic partnerships around our elementary dual-language, both the curricular supports and professional learning, just as a snapshot of the work that we do across all grade levels, all schools, and all content areas. Last year, we paid particular attention during this update around our work in the foundational sort of word recognition area with our foundations, demonstration schools, and coaching. And we also talked a bit about our elementary school guided observations. And so this is just another spotlight into the work that we do as a learning and teaching team.
All right, thank you. As Katie said, my name is Amy Baker Zaleski. I'm the Assistant Director of Language Pathways and Programs, and I'm excited to be here today. I just finished my second year with District 205, and I'm excited to continue the work elevating our programming for emergent bilingual students across the district in the coming years. So tonight, as Katie said, I'll be speaking with you specifically about my work and the elementary dual-language program at Conrad Fisher, as it relates to the curricular supports and professional learning efforts to elevate the student experience in our elementary dual-language program. So before we get started, I want to do a quick overview of the what and the why of dual-language programs. District 205 is in compliance with the statutory requirements for supporting English learners, students who qualify as English learners, per the state of Illinois, and the services we are required to provide them. Those services, they fall within two buckets. The first is Transitional Program of Instruction, or TPI. In this, any student who has an emergent bilingual student, which is the word we use for English learners, they are required to provide a TPI program. We have EL specialists and specially certified teachers at each school that support students with their language, English language acquisition. Now, when a school has 20 or more students that are English learners that have the same home language background, they're required to provide more services, which is a TBE program or Transitional Bilingual Program. In this type of program, we're required to provide native language support in that home language for all the students within this language group at that particular school. Now, there's different types of transitional bilingual education programs. One is a two-way dual-language program, which I'll be speaking with you today, which we have at Conrad Fisher Elementary and Churchville Middle School. And in this type of TBE program, we provide native English speakers and Spanish-speaking emergent bilingual students are together, becoming bilingual and biliterate in both languages. All of our schools in our district have a TPI, or Transitional Program of Instruction, because we all have emergent bilingual students, but six of our schools have Transitional Bilingual Education Programs for Spanish, one of which is Conrad Fisher. We have a two-way dual-language program, which is what I'll be highlighting today. One of the key components of a successful two-way dual-language program is called a content language allocation, which you can see ours displayed here. This is the student experience of our elementary dual-language program continuing into middle school. When students come into the program in kindergarten, they spend 90% of their day in Spanish, as you can see by the green boxes, and 10% of their day in English, as you can see by the blue boxes. As they approach fourth and fifth grade, that percentage changed to 50/50 in each of the languages, and as they move into the dual-language program at Churchville Middle School, 30% of their day is in Spanish and 70% is in English. This gradual increase of English language instruction is the most effective model for our Spanish-speaking emergent bilingual students in the program. Along with this, another key component of a successful dual-language program is high-quality curriculum. So tonight, we want to highlight the work of the LNT team in elevating the curricular units of study for our dual-language students, and we call these the D205 Dual Language Modules, which consist of two parts of a biliteracy program. When I was hired by the district, the district had just completed an instructional review of our dual-language programming and our emergent bilingual programming with partnership of Tajou Educational Solutions, excuse me. This instructional review revealed that there was an opportunity to elevate the curricular resources for our elementary dual-language students. So I'm very excited today to present to you the product of the work over the last two years, which will be rolled out in its entirety this coming school year. So the design of the D205 Dual Language Modules is based on research for literacy and biliteracy. We use the IMET to ensure that we are providing our elementary dual-language students with a high-quality curriculum. The IMET is the Instructional Materials Evaluation Tool. This is a tool that was created by Achieve the Core to support districts in, in looking at curricular resources to ensure that they meet the shifts of the common core. There are three non-negotiables of the IMET, Building Knowledge, Evidence-Based Discussion and Writing, and High Quality Text, and then a fourth for Primary Grades, Kinder through Third Grade, which is foundational skills. In addition, as a district, we added two non-negotiables, because this is not, this is a monolingual tool. The first is Cultural Relevance. It's very important for dual-language students to see themselves reflected in the materials, and as well as best practices for dual-language instruction. Excuse me. One, here we go. In addition to the IMET, we also used the format and the structure of Witten Wisdom. This is important for a couple of reasons. First, Witten Wisdom is a research-based program, so we want to leverage that. And in addition, the monolingual program uses Witten Wisdom. This presents us an opportunity for collaboration between dual-language and monolingual teachers, which helps us to, to achieve an equally important goal, which is bringing those professional learning communities, which at Fisher consist of monolingual and dual-language teachers, bringing them together to elevate outcomes for all of our students. So to provide some insight into what a D205 Dual Language Module looks like, I'm going to provide you a third-grade example. So in our Content Language Allocation Plan for third grade, you can see you have your Spanish literacy block and English literacy block highlighted. The D205 Dual Language Module is one whole biliteracy unit of study. It consists of a Spanish modulo and an English module. The Spanish module is taught during that Spanish literacy block, and the English module is taught during this English literacy block. Literacy standards are consistent in both languages throughout the day, and then students can leverage what they're learning in both languages during that particular unit of study. Theme and topic intersect, so students can learn more broadly about these themes and topics and apply the learning across different contexts. It's important to remember that dual-language teachers have the same number of instructional minutes in their day as monolingual teachers, and they are teaching in two languages. So one way we support this as a program is we integrate science into the Spanish literacy block and social science into the English literacy block. The standards are the same, it's just done through a literacy focus. So this here is an example of a D205 Dual Language Module for third grade, it's Module One. It's called Fuerzas Formidables, or Formidable Forces. I may have Rudy pass one around as well. In Spanish, the essential question is, ¿Cómo las fuerzas afectan al mundo? How do forces affect the world? And this, in this modulo, through rich texts, students explore the idea of formidable forces and their impact, from the force of art, the force of poetry, a powerful story, the powerful brain of Albert Einstein, as well as the force of magnetism, which, along with Mystery Science Units, Mystery Science Lessons accomplishes the science standards for the unit. In English, students explore the forces through the lens of the sea. The sea is the first Witten Wisdom Module for third grade, which monolingual teachers teach in its entirety. This Witten Wisdom Module has been adapted for our dual-language program, not only for timing, we have about half the time in our English literacy block that the monolingual teachers do, but also filtered then through the lens of forces and the lens of the inquiry standards of social science. So select texts from the Witten Wisdom Unit, students explore the forces of a great story, friendship, the force of the sea, its creatures, as well as make connections between the forces of a powerful brain of Jacques Cousteau and Albert Einstein. The writing product is very similar in structure, but different because of the context, and students leveraging, students can leverage learning across languages to improve both products. So we recognize a high-quality curriculum is essential to elevate student outcomes, but we also know it's how teachers and leaders make sense of the curriculum that's equally as important. So now I'd like to showcase how I've supported our dual-language teachers and leaders with this new curriculum. The professional learning efforts for Fisher this year fell under three buckets. First, we have the leader level with guided observations for leaders. Second, we have the team level with coaching and professional learning communities. And last, the teacher level in facilitating teacher learning communities. The purpose of the guided observations for leaders was to deepen leaders' awareness of Tier One literacy instructional practices, elevate leaders' feedback to teachers, and reflect on teachers' needs based on observational data. I facilitated learning for teachers around student oracy, deepening leaders' understanding of the research around this topic, and then using a line look-for tool to guide our observations. In this tool, the goal is for teachers to be at a three. During the guided observations, we gathered data of where our teachers were at, and then used that data in our strategic planning to support teachers in this area. The purpose of the coaching of professional learning communities was to promote data-driven instruction through the analysis of student work samples and response to student needs. My PLC coaching was grounded in these questions, which I facilitated, with which I facilitated the analysis of student work samples from the curriculum. This coaching promoted teachers to move from just analysis and reflection to that fourth question, really thinking about those shifts in instruction based on student data. And last, the purpose of the teacher learning community was to deepen leaders, oh, sorry, deepen teachers' understanding of Tier One literacy instructional practices with a focus on student oracy, text-centered instruction, and the use of student data. student oracy, text-centered instruction, and the use of student data in a formative assessment cycle. I'd like to highlight that the Teacher Learning Community engages, engaged in learning around student oracy, which was the same focus as the learning for leaders and the focus of our Guided Observations for Leaders. It was very important that all stakeholders were included in that learning, as well as that the data we collected in our guided observations informed the execution of that learning. So I have highlighted high-quality curriculum, the aligned instructional, aligned professional learning to support that adoption, and it's important that this, to know that this is and has been and continues to be a multi-year journey. So this slide highlights the work that has been done over the last two years that I've just shared with you. Notice that the professional learning focus is differentiated by grade-level band that helps us provide the specific supports for those grade-level bands. The graphic also shows the changes in the dual language day from the student experience. Looking ahead, we're excited to continue our focus on refining Tier One literacy instruction in our elementary dual language program as we roll out the D205 Dual Language Modules in their entirety next year, as well as continue to refine la hora, erla, en il, which is a powerful small-group literacy instructional block of the day. In the last year of the plan, the only shift will be in grades K-2, where teachers refine the biliteracy foundational skills maps, which Spanish foundational skills are only taught through second grade because it's a phonetic language. So I'm going to hand it over to Katie now to highlight the district's approach to continuous improvement efforts.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, so what's important for us is that, you know, something that we heard last year as we gave our update was, so we do all these, this great learning, and we do guided observations with leaders, and to what end, you know, where does that lead us? And so I just wanted to ground us in how learning and teaching approaches our continuous improvement efforts. And so we've heard, of course, a lot about the importance of high-quality curriculum and how important it is of how teachers use that curriculum and support them through high-quality professional learning, and then, of course, how they execute on them of high-quality teaching. And all of that is to lead to increased student outcomes. That is the ultimate goal. And so I just listed here, you know, how we really commit to honoring our leaders and teachers' experience and insights, and how we keep content at the core. That's been really important for us, to bring leaders and teachers along to the research-aligned practices, so that they then can uphold those within the classroom, and really making sure that we're empowering leaders and teachers through this approach. We also make sure that we're measuring and monitoring impact in effort, again, to increase student outcomes. And some of the ways that we do that as a learning and teaching team is a continuous collection of observational data alongside school leadership teams, and then activating school leadership teams to continue to collect that observational data. What you see at the top graphic, the spring data collection, is a tool that a school used with feedback and input from the teaching and learning team to collect data based on our instructional priorities across all content areas. The green represents when teachers are really nailing that indicator. Yellow is they're on their way developing, and red is where they're not meeting that. All teacher, or all leaders at all 13 of our buildings engaged in this collection this spring, and the learning and teaching team uses that to think about what's next for our professional learning plan in terms of particular grade levels and focus areas, you know, where are we at in terms of monitoring progress towards our priorities. Secondly, we take a look, of course, at analysis of our school environment data, and that's really, one of the measures we use for that is five essentials. That helps us think about how we're evaluating the effectiveness of our collaborative teachers, effective leaders, and ambitious instruction. And then, of course, analysis of academic progress data. That's really important to us, so that includes, you know, IAR, SAT, ACT, access data, and others. And that helps us evaluate and analyze our ambitious instruction with tiered supports. And then the two tools that you see at the bottom are just the aligned look-for tools, and that comes, like Amy mentioned, with the, the learning that we're doing with leaders. Then we're also supporting that with what are the look-for tools when we go in, and then how do we provide aligned feedback to teachers? So one highlight we wanted to make is just the outcomes that we have seen with this very strategic and intentional district and school-level partnership around these continuous improvement efforts. So Amy mentioned, or highlighted, the dual-language elementary school program, and so we did want to highlight data from Conrad Fisher, since our work over the past two years has really led to those student outcomes. Again, that is the goal. And so we've highlighted the, the five essentials that we look at, the IAR data, as well as our Last Links data for our rising sixth graders, that help us make sense of how our dual-language specific students, specifically students in the dual-language program are performing. So we're excited that we're on the journey of our improvement efforts. We're not done, but this is one way that we can evaluate the success of the learning and teaching efforts, and if we're not seeing that, how we make shifts and we adjust. And so as we look ahead to next year, we are excited to make some shifts as it relates to our professional learning. We started the session with that kind of heat map, where we saw the rings and the number of professional learning engagements, and we're really excited that we're at a place in our district to really differentiate our school-based support plans. And not that we won't bring teachers together or leaders together, but we've really evaluated where each school uniquely is at within their own context, and we've developed an individualized school support plan for each school based on where they're at in terms of that spring data collection. That was really powerful in supporting our individual school-based support plan. So this is just a snapshot of the support plan at Bryan Middle School. It's actually four pages long, but this is just how differentiated and how targeted we're providing our school and partnering with our school leaders to, to provide professional learning next year that we're really excited about. So Amy and I are happy to answer any questions if you have any, but thank you for just allowing us some time to provide a glimpse into the work that the learning and teaching team has engaged in this year.
Thank you. Covered a lot of ground in 22 minutes. I'll open it up to the board for questions or comments. Sure, Courtney.
Thank you both. Appreciate it a lot. And I just have really some clarifying questions, because, you know, I always feel if I'm confused, somebody in our community is just as confused. And so I just wanted to clarify a couple of items. So the, the guided observations, first thing I want to make sure, and I think I know the answer to this, that the community understands that these guided observations don't just happen in the dual-language program. They happen in all of our classrooms across all of our grades, and so all of our students and all of our programs are benefiting from this kind of correction if need be, or, you know, elevation from our teachers, correct?
Absolutely.
And then, how often do these guided observations happen?
I was trying to see, so in this snapshot, what you can see right here for next year, if you take a look at the Amplify ELA Guided Observations, for example, each school is slightly different, but based on Bryan Middle School's needs, next year, they will receive three rounds of guided observations for Amplify ELA alone. They're also going to receive rounds of observations, typically two to three, but for illustrative math next year, it will be three. Math is not highlighted, it's on the next page. And then we also do guided observations in our Reach ELA classrooms, because they, they utilize a different curricular resource. That will be two times next year. In addition, we have language, you know, guided observations for our emergent bilinguals, and we also have guided observations for our social studies content. We use ICIVICS next year as well as Inquire Eds, so those are different rounds of observations. And so at any building, we're doing, you know, a dozen at least guided observations across the grade levels and across the content areas, led by our directors, in partnership with our, with our principals. One thing that we're also really tapping into is how we're modeling those guided observations, and then instructional coaches are replicating those. So these might be district-led, but instructional coaches and leadership teams are replicating those. So there's many more guided observations that exist outside of the district's support.
As usual, you answered one of my questions before I even had a chance to ask it, because I was going to say, what's, you know, what's the real-time feedback to the teachers look like, and who is there, since it can't be district all the time, to kind of reinforce the feedback and, and how that change occurs? So does that happen at the building level?
That does happen at the building level, depending on the building and the content and where we're at in our phases of implementation, whether we're at a learn phase, or a deepen phase, or a no phase, it differs. Sometimes we're giving feedback trends overall, particularly when we're in a learn phase, to make sure we're really honoring our teachers', like, vulnerability of having us come into their classroom. And then we move into more targeted feedback for professional learning communities, so maybe a grade-level PLC will receive the feedback together as trends across. And then there's also targeted individual feedback. So there's different types of feedback based on the purpose of that guided observation. Typically, when the district is there, that's more trends, right? That's rolling up and supporting the leader and the leadership team to think about what's next for their own school-based learning. And then when the instructional coaches replicate them, or the leadership teams replicate them without the district, that's more targeted, individualized feedback. And it's really important that we separate this from evaluation, right? Because this is more about development, and so we have to be very mindful of that. We work really closely with the union to ensure that that's clear, but that's always something on our mind of balancing trends, feedback with individual feedback.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, the mindset is that you're setting them up for success, all these supports, right? And so, and I appreciate all of it. I appreciate the support system, because I think a lot of times we hear about individualized learning for our students and teaching of our students, but we often forget that our teachers need that same kind of guidance and, you know, ability to succeed, like the, the support system to succeed. So I appreciate this. Love this presentation. Thank you both very much.
Can I, can I add a, for my own clarity, piece two? So when we're seeing this, we can use this example that you had up there about the Amplify ELA Guided Observations at Bryan, for example, like those three times a year where the district goes in to the campus, right? They go into the building three times, not every classroom, right? To monitor implementation. Am I reading that correct? Or I'm processing that correctly? Okay. And so it's really kind of a dipstick for the district to, to monitor implementation more so than what you just mentioned when it comes to evaluation of educators, right? Clearly, an opportunity to provide feedback if you saw something while you were in the room, if, you know, informally, but ultimately, you're seeing how your professional development that you implemented, right, or hosted, is, is looking in the classroom based on each building.
And additionally, I would add that it is also an opportunity for us to reflect on how the instructional leadership team, the principal, assistant principal, instructional coach, any specialists that are joining us, or department or division chairs, how they are activating the changes focused in on the instructional priority. So we are guiding the observations to give feedback to the leadership team as well. So that's really important, that part of this isn't just feedback to teachers, it's really about feedback to leaders.
It's actually before teachers, right? It's, it's the leaders who then are having an impact on instruction in the classroom. So if you see commonalities in the three walk-ins that you have, right, at one school, you're going to identify, hey, we're seeing some consistency here, there's two priorities that we think instruction needs to focus on to help maximize the curriculum and its resources, yeah?
That's exactly correct. And what we also do is if we're not seeing progress towards the priorities by spring, right, like if we see the same things in that second visit that we saw on the first visit, that's a conversation with the leadership team, like, so we said we were going to take this action, was that taken, and why aren't we maybe seeing the impact we wanted to see? And so there's also a very clear expectation that progress is being measured over those three visits, and we walk away with a clear action plan each time for the leadership team to then enact at the building.
And now you're catering that to each building and what you're seeing at different buildings. Where in the, in the last few years, it's been district-wide kind of standards, and now we're able to kind of hone in and become more granular on the needs of specific buildings, and then in the future, that leads into the needs of specific classrooms, potentially.
Absolutely, and it helps us as a learning and teaching team prioritize our time, because there are certain buildings where we might not actually be leading a guided observation because the instructional coach is ready to lead that, right? And so there's different places, so then that allows us to prioritize our time somewhere else.
Can I just follow up on that? In the same, in the same opposite, is there, is there a look at trends like, say, all three middle schools, right? So is it not just within a building? Are you looking at it across all, like that same grade group?
Yes, and then in fact, we have a leadership session with the middle school leaders, where we roll up the trends across all three middle schools. And if there are trends, it also helps Carrie and I think about what's the learning leaders' need if we're not making progress toward a particular area. Maybe it's because we're not giving aligned feedback to teachers around that. So we do meet with the middle school leadership team as a collective to roll up the trends and think about, as a leadership team across our middle schools, how do we want to enact change? And so there is that level of, like, individual and collaboration.
I just want to add one point, because I don't want us to make sure we underscore this. We oftentimes mention that we are moving from a doing to a learning organization, and I want to emphasize that this is not district office doing something with the school, or doing to a school. This is us coming alongside and making sure that we are providing the necessary supports for our staff to be most successful in meeting the needs of our students. And so I think one of the things that I want us to also really be able to appreciate is the readiness of our culture as a district to be able to receive these various types of learning structures in a way, because it is very intimidating to have, you know, administrators or individuals walk into your classroom. It is not evaluative. We have worked so hard with building a culture of moving and shifting our understanding of the collaboration and the practice and the support needed in order to make sure that we are all learning and becoming smarter and better to meet the needs of our students, aligned to research best practices while elevating these really high-quality curricular resources. So I have to just say, we have to thank our staff. Our staff has been absolutely incredible in this, from the receptivity of our teachers to our principal leaders, to our instructional coaches and leadership teams that have really come alongside us, and how it has continued to evolve over the course of the years to the point where we're now developing individualized learning plans. And so just go, that, you don't have to go to that slide, but making sure we keep having a pulse on, is this having the impact, and is this being received in a way? So to hear staff members say that there is growing clarity in alignment, to hear staff members say that they appreciate the revisiting of expectations around lessons and planned designs is really a testament to our quality staff under the leadership of this teaching and learning team and directly under the leadership of various cabinet members. And so just want to say kudos, and I know our board appreciates that, but it does take a staff to, to go on and has been on this journey with us for the last couple of years to be at this place, to see the impact that we're seeing.
Beth?
Yeah, I just wanted to, in that regard, the, the kind of real-time response and support to teachers and buildings for students is really great. I mean, we don't have to wait an entire year to look at data to find out that, you know, we need to support teachers or students in a certain way and make that shift throughout the year and give that support to teachers so that they'll be able to do that and respond to that. It's really important. And just having so many different ways that they can find that support within their buildings. We were in a building watching a grade-level team work together as they developed their lesson plans for the following week, and just talking through together what that was going to look like, some things that maybe they had struggled with the prior week, and how they could adjust in working together, and with the instructional coach. I mean, it was just, I mean, if I was a teacher, I was like, this is what I would want that to look like and to have that support in so many different ways. So I really appreciate seeing that and hearing that there's so many ways they can get that. I also just want to highlight the work of this team and our building leaders and staff in the dual-language department. And I know when Ms. Lyons came here, we had a fairly young dual-language program that needed to be assessed and needed some refining, and this team, with lots of other people and, and support, looked at our dual-language program, brought the entire dual-language community together to get input and feedback, to find out, you know, what was working well, where did we need to make some improvements, to make sure that we had the right resources for students and staff and families, and that we had the right supports for them, and that we had the right trajectory for our students as they were growing in our program and moving up. And I know that was a huge effort and that there are so many people involved in that, but I think that our dual-language community- But I think that our dual-language community would agree that their experience with the dual-language program has greatly improved since you guys have been here and doing this work. So we just really appreciate that. And the data shows that the work that you're doing is making an impact on student growth and obviously on staff support and what they're able to do at the instructional level and the resources that you're bringing into the classroom. So thank you so much for that work. And I know there's more to be done, and you guys will be working on that nonstop, but just wanted to show our appreciation.
Anyone else? I'll just say, because I do want to highlight this, we've gone, I mean, four years now that I've been here through significant curricular shifts. And that leadership needed to not just implement, but research, find, develop, approach, you know, is, it's, like Dr. Campbell says, a heavy lift, but it's more than that. It is probably your lives, and we know that over the last four years, that's been the focus. And primarily, you know, knowing where we were four years ago, eight years ago, identifying our strategic plan, I want to tie this into, you know, why those priorities are important and a strategic plan is important for a district, because this is the type of impact it has on the work that goes, that really permeates throughout the district. We forget, because we live in small-town Elmhurst, how big our district actually is. And this is a tremendous amount of leadership that was needed to get us here. And we know that there'll be more coming, more leadership needed to move us forward into the future. But it's so nice to see year after year this quality of leadership in our district. And so I just want to say sincere thank you to you all for doing that work. It is not easy from an educator. This is not easy work to implement what we've implemented over the last four years or even six, you know? So thank you for that. With that, we'll move on to B, which is monitoring progress and taking action. We're looking at instructional materials yet again selection for adoption. It's like the never-ending agenda item.
Continuous improvement.
I love, I'm all for continuous improvement.
So it was wonderful to be able to highlight the elementary dual-language program. And what we're putting forward today for a recommendation for approval and public display over the next 30 days is a textbook for use in our Spanish for Spanish speakers courses, which our middle-school dual-language students all take. And the title of the text that we're putting forward is Perspectivas. It's an intermediate Spanish textbook and, excuse me, program that offers a unique focus on the cultural perspectives of the Spanish-speaking world by embedding cultural products and practices into every aspect of instruction. It teaches students to communicate inside and outside the classroom with competency and understanding in that target language, Spanish. And this will be used as our core curricular resource in the middle-school Spanish for Spanish speakers course moving forward pending your approval. It is, thank you, Rudy, on display right now on our website. And so 30 days begins today. There is a linked instructional materials review form for the public to provide feedback on this textbook. They are also welcome to come to the district office to see a physical copy of the textbook, not digital this time. And so would welcome that over the next 30 days to provide feedback and insights from the community on this use of the textbook within our Spanish for Spanish speakers course. So excited to elevate outcomes and provide higher-quality materials in those courses or in that course.
And Katie, just tying this back to your last presentation, just to be more specific and, but general, we're talking about middle-school Spanish for Spanish speakers, Churchville TBE, or what is this?
Yes, this is Spanish for Spanish speakers. We have all of our dual-language students who are engaged in that course at Churchville. And we also have Spanish for Spanish speakers for our students at Sandberg and at Bryan. So any student that takes this course would have access to this textbook at all three middle schools.
Okay.
It is considered our TBE program at Churchville and our TPI.
Acronyms are our friends.
It's an elective at Sandberg and Bryan, so it's not necessarily TBE or TPI.
But it's the one resource for essentially dual-language in sixth grade going into middle school, throughout the middle school, or feeding through.
And if you don't, yes, or at Sandberg and Bryan, if you elect to take this course, absolutely.
Great.
Thank you for that clarity.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, thanks for that. Anything else? I didn't think so from the board on B. All right, item C is the multi-tiered, ooh, MTSS, multi-tiered system of supports. Next path. Sounds like a movie.
Okay, I'm going to kick us off, and then I will pass it over to Dr. Rubenstein briefly. But we are excited to provide an update on our journey as a district around our multi-tiered systems of support, continuous improvement, with a particular focus around a data system that we are looking to elevate our practices. So if you remember back in December Superintendent Communication, we shared that D-205 partnered with the American Institute for Research, or AIRs, Center for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support to do a review of our current practices. And so what that review entailed was really a needs assessment that had focus groups with K-5, 612, and district leadership team members to really do some foundational level setting and learning around what are those key MTSS components in AIR's framework? And then also really evaluate both school-based and district-wide practices and how we're doing it alongside their Fidelity of Implementation Tool. We also had all stakeholders engage in a survey where we had over 450 respondents around perceptions of MTSS practices, both school and district level. And so from that program review alongside AIR, one of the recommendations that we have highlighting there is that progress monitoring and database decision-making are areas of opportunity. And so you'll see that graphic is really AIR's, that's been D-205, structure and framework for what it means to have a robust and comprehensive MTSS framework. And so that centerpiece, that orange piece around database decision-making, is really the nexus to be able to do everything else. And so we have identified that that's an area where we really want to prioritize and make sure we have a robust system to be able to drive the work. So further, if we look at the rubric, right, that we evaluated, database decision-making was made up of three components: data-making processes, a data system, and responsiveness to targeted intensive levels of intervention. And so an area, again, that we identified to really streamline and support was our data system. And so what you see on the right-hand side of the screen is what the three components are that make up a strong data system, right? So that system allows to document and access individual student-level data and instructional decisions. Data are entered in a timely manner, and data can be represented visually or graphically. And if you remember from our Committee of the Whole this spring, some of our leaders really highlighted and elevated how they're, you know, utilizing spreadsheets and team members to compile that data. And so this was really identified as an opportunity for us to streamline that across all buildings and all grade levels, to say, what could a data system look like that is holistic? So we've previously used ACRIS, which has really provided an opportunity for us to do this on just the academic level, right? But when we think about social-emotional support, learning environment, you know, things like nurse visits, we talked quite a bit about at the Committee of the Whole, and what it means to support students across all aspects of their school experience, we've identified an opportunity to not forget about the academic data, but really triangulate it with all those pieces. So I'm now going to pass it over to Kevin, where we took this information, we said, okay, what could this mean for continuous improvement in D-205?
And so really, after we received the report from the American Institutes of Research in December and January, we really dug into it and identified this critical next lever that we needed to pull related to having a unified data system. So our Director of Research and Assessment for the District, Dr. Jacob Worts, really dove into identifying 10 different data providers that were, that are out there. We talked with our unit district comparables and made sure that we were on track there and did an initial review with those with brief product demonstration. So we didn't want to bring everybody in and do that. We really wanted to have those be a brief snapshot of what is going on with each of these, and we pitched it to each of those organizations as such. We then narrowed it to four, and then three providers were brought in to do full presentations. They were about an hour long each to a selected group of people across the district who are serving in MTSS roles. And so once we did that, then there was a clear frontrunner that emerged, which is Next Path, which is what we're talking with you about this evening, which, yeah, it really is the Next Path that is unlocking the power of connected data. And so what we did with Next Path then, and they have been really great to work with so far, what we did with them is that we brought them in and they talked with our school psychologists, our assistant principals, other people in roles who are regularly pulling together lots of data there. So some of the things that we are really excited about in a potential new data platform, and I'll go through the timeline here at the end, and some of these might be some things that we are really excited about on the inside, but they are really going to help streamline our data processes and how schools actually utilize data on a regular basis. So this is something that we are really very much looking forward to, an interactive data wall. For those of you who have been in the education field for a while, this might be something that we were plotting out. It would take a long time to actually have a full data wall with all of the student names and their, each of their pieces there. But each of these dot points on this chart are actually individual data points. So this one that you see on the screen right now are like the Wisconsin standards and that sort of thing. But we envision this being a unified chart to pull together all of our Illinois Assessment of Readiness data, that data from the nurses' office that we can calibrate there, some different pieces of student attendance data and chronic absenteeism, as well as some of the things that are on some of those Google spreadsheets that Carrie talked about earlier. So some of the initial data entering that we are doing at the teacher level will be streamlined and put into this same system. So you really can get a whole picture of who's on track, who needs additional supports, and where, what that looks like as a whole student. One of the other pieces here is the student profile page. So every single student will have an individual student profile page that unifies all of their data and all of their possible data points that are in the system into one specific place. So we currently envision this as a teacher-facing and leader-facing document, but eventually, or screen, eventually, this is something that could be shared during a parent-teacher conference, that could be aligned with parent meeting, with an IEP meeting, and those sorts of things, to really have easy access to what's happening with that specific student and where they're at in real time. So the other nice piece of this is that it is bringing together lots of our systems and syncing the data each night, most of the time, through another system that we use, and making sure that everybody has updated and easily accessible information. Some of the pieces that we currently rely on ACRIS for right now, related to the standardized assessment and understanding exactly what this looks like, if this were a real, live screen, I would be able to actually click on any one of those and then see a list of students who are in each of those boxes and really zero down into that data. And so really seeing it in real time. Something else that is really important is over on the right-hand side of the screen, though it's a little bit hard to see, is things like change over time, things that we might be looking for related to students that we have an extra set of eyes on related to a student watch list, making sure that we readily understand and are gaining a better understanding about how our students are performing on different assessments. So that's a nice piece that we are looking to enhance user capabilities with, with this new system. This is something that I spend a lot of time in, is our attendance reporting. And I can tell you that there is a lot of pulling reports from Power School, putting them into spreadsheets, manipulating that data, all of that other stuff. This cuts out most of those steps. So all of that is here in very real time, updated on a day-to-day basis. And so we'll be able to see attendance trends compared to last year at this time, very easily and updated and accessible. We'll be able to see that average daily attendance, some of which is in Power School, but the way that it is broken down here so that I can easily click on just the students who are really at risk for chronic absenteeism, that sort of thing, and identify who those students are, maybe put them in a group, and really work together to share that powerful data. As we look here, next, there is a built-in tool called the I Am a Learner Report, which we envision customizing related to our student journey of excellence. So really aligning this to make sure that in the future, as we have a really solid understanding about all of the benchmarks along the way in our unit district that will make a student college and career-ready, that it will show up on this I Am a Learner Report, which could be, again, parent-facing and other places facing, so that we can have a really solid understanding of just the number of learners in our district, by demographic group, in every grade level, in every school that is on track to be college, career, and life-ready. So it's something that's really nice there. The piece that some of the people from all across our district are really most excited about, though, is this MTSS management piece. So this will unify all that we do related to MTSS and make sure that student data and information about interventions is actually brought together in one solid place. So currently, it is, if we are not managing our data appropriately, which we are, but if we are not managing our data correctly or appropriately and have efficient, people who are efficient users of that data, it would be possible for Carrie to be in an intervention and for me as a teacher or as a school leader in another part of the building to not have access to that data and those spreadsheets. So this will bring everything together and have a solid history of what's going on related to MTSS management. So we're very, very excited about that. So this last piece here is, I envision Glimpse surveys as just about everything else that you could possibly want to do with this. So I'm going to create a group just of, for, if I'm a counselor at York High School, I'm going to create a group of just my students on my caseload who are chronically absent for the last school year and make sure that their grades are staying on track during this current school year. So that will be possible in this new piece here. Any sort of student group that we're able to dive into, or if I'm a classroom teacher, I could do that, though it is already sort of built in there. If I am looking to track, or we are looking to track, our students who attend our summer programming and that sort of thing, to make sure that they are staying on track with their chronic absenteeism or other pieces of data, we are going to make sure that all of that is here in a Glimpse survey. So just our next steps for Next Path are that we are bringing this to you as information this evening to the Board of Education. We are anticipating bringing a recommendation for approval at our July 29, 2025 Board of Education meeting. And so that will include additional information about costs and what the exact systems that it's replacing, because some of that during the first year, we are going to have a better understanding about what that exactly looks like. And then in August 2025 and beyond, some leader and stakeholder training. And really emphasizing the beyond because we are being very intentional about who we train in the first rounds and then how we roll that out initially, so that we are really having a solid understanding about what and how we are going to use this. Additionally, we will be taking stock of some of our current systems and identifying opportunities for streamlining. So just as a small example, they have a behavior reporting module that is a part of this that could eventually replace, like, our Swiss systems. Right now, it syncs with Swiss. We received some feedback from other schools and districts that utilize this, that that could eventually replace that in the future. So all of those sorts of systems that are out there that we could potentially then take advantage of. take advantage of in future years. So, Carrie and I will pause right there and take any questions that you have.
So, I think, I'm just clarifying, so a couple, I don't know, it was like three pages back. So, it will, this system will actually help to track interventions? Like, for example, does it, would it go all the way down to the classroom level, like the students on tier two for these things? And, you know, it's, they're being, they're being successful or not, and then maybe they're ready for the next tier for different interventions and supports? Will that, does that just track it and tell you, like, timing, or what, or does it not go like kind of that?
So, this data system is as robust as we make it. So, if we, that is probably not something that we're going to do in the first six months, is to track the classroom-level tiered interventions. But certainly, the pieces related to school implementation and who's receiving tier two and tier three outside of the classroom, right, those sorts of things are going to be tracked in here in an MTSS system.
Can I, I have a question, then I'll go on.
It's close to Kelly's. Mine is more around, so you have behavioral interventions, which you've obviously outlined quite a bit with nurse's office, absence visits, things like that, but then learning interventions, which I think is what Kelly is talking about in the classroom, two separate kind of buckets. It feels like, from the presentation, starting off as you're learning the system and implementing, if this is approved, for next year's implementation, starting with the behavioral interventions would be where you're starting, am I gathering that correctly? Because learning interventions is, I think, what Kelly's getting at, and that's the classroom monitoring piece, so, but equally as valuable, right?
So, what, so what this will initially do, and it sort of talks about it on, like, some of the interactive data walls here, is that it will pull a student's IAR report directly into here, and I will be able to see this as a classroom teacher, you know, eventually leading into that.
Yeah, which is getting me to my next point of, when we're talking about tier one, tier two, tier three interventions, are those identified? You know, a classroom teacher can look and see the student's IARs and do nothing with that, or figure out what interventions are recommended, or which interventions worked in the past for students that are now going to carry to the next year or the next course? How does, does that, how does that happen? I don't know that it happens through a data warehouse, is my point.
That's one piece of it, Carrie.
Thank you. Carrie's eager to answer.
I will hop in and then Katie might add. So, okay, I will hop on and then Katie will add. And so, first, what we want to say, right, is you're right that this system isn't outlining, like, who has access to those, right? And so, the learning and teaching team partners with schools to really outline, right, what is the data that indicates that students are moving in and out of different tiers, right, both, so entrance and exit? And so, this system is really allowing us to then add the layer of, not only are we having entrance and exit, but is the intervention working for that student? And so, there are, we currently do that through spreadsheets, and so, that is a lot, right? You can imagine Katie's team spending an enormous amount of time following up with each individual school and making sure that we're able to monitor that. And so, this is really streamlining that process to be able to say, is the intervention that we are offering doing? But those indicators of what intervention is appropriate is really outlined in partnerships with school, with the learning and teaching team.
I'm like trying to whisper to Katie Lyons, like she can hear what I'm saying. I know your glasses. But I think another thing that the team was really excited about, too, is that our current system pulls standardized data, right? So, we've talked about IAR, but what we know is that there are many other formative assessments, like, we've talked a lot about our curricular, our high-quality curricular resources. There are also curricular-based assessments that are in that resources that will also be indication in terms of how the interventions and the support is helping more students learn better, right? And so, I think that's another thing, is that the level of sophistication and the amount of information that can be utilized in this platform is really exciting, because then it allows for our data literacy to then shift to focus on the response of the information, not trying to gather and organize the information. And that's, that's the, that's the critical piece as to why, in our interviews, in our information sessions with various stakeholders, that they were most excited about. And I'm sure, you know, those of us that are, you know, have this awareness of, like, it's one thing to have the information, but what's most important is how we then use that information to make the necessary shifts in order to support our students.
Kelly wants to follow up, and then Nikki's been waiting patiently.
Was it, am I cutting you?
No, go ahead. Everyone's going. Everyone will take a turn. Lot of excitement.
So, who identifies the follow-up? Are the teachers looking at the data on a regular basis, or is it the administrative team or principals? Like, who owns looking at the data and identifying how to use it?
When we talk about, like, for example, I'll just give a very concrete example, because sometimes that's easier to, in terms of programming for our tiered interventions for reading, for example, at the elementary school level, a reading specialist caseload is determined by like a decision tree. We have priorities around students that would receive reading specialty services. The learning and teaching team partners with Dr. Wertz, our reading, our Director of Literacy Program and Pathways, and our principals at the buildings. And we give recommendations for caseloads as a learning and teaching team for kids that meet the need for that. And then, what becomes very nuanced is that there's different programs targeted for different students. And so, the MTSS interactive tool that you see here, this management tool, is really helpful for us, because we'll have a group of students even within one building that might receive an intervention called Just Words. And then, when we need, when we have kids that need more of a tiered and more intervention, they'll use Wilson. What makes it difficult right now for us is to say, is Just Words as a tier-two program working at all buildings, right? We have to use spreadsheets to do that. But this, this management tool will allow me to gain insight across all of our buildings. For kids that are being slotted into that intervention using Just Words, are we seeing them exit? Are we seeing they make progress? And are they making progress at all seven, or all eight elementary schools? And if there is, if they are making it in seven, but not eight, then there's a particular development plan we do for a school where we're saying, oh, well, Just Words is working everywhere else. Let's figure out why it might not be working for students in your building. Are there different needs? Is it the right, wrong program for your kiddos? But right now, we have, in ECRIS, we were able to build like reading caseloads, or EL specialist caseloads, or math interventionist caseloads, and we really do that at the district level. But it's hard to pull it up across schools to really say, is it working? But in terms of monitoring progress of the data, school teams are regularly engaging six to 10 weeks. They're really doing robust data meetings. So, this is going to help schools, but it's also going to help at the district level, make sure we're meeting kids' needs with the right program.
So, primarily, we're using this for groups of students rather than individual?
The really powerful-
Or will we eventually get to the individual piece?
Yes, it will be used for both. Mm-hmm.
I see different uses. I'm sorry, thank you. No, go ahead.
My other, just quick question, is the I Am a Learner Report, I assume all of these reports are customizable?
Highly, highly customizable, yes. So, this is an example from another school district, but all of them are customizable related to our district.
Sorry, I was just going to say, I see multiple uses for this. At the district level, very much data warehouse, understanding, big picture, what's happening in our district, but then as a campus leader, specifically, I mean, take the high school, for example, knowing your students, understanding where they're at, being able to pull grade reports or attendance records in ways that are more efficient, honing in on a group of students to be able to provide, I'm going to go back to my learning interventions or behavioral interventions pieces, right? And so, I think that's really where, this as a structure seems like a very positive. It's, I'm feeling some excitement from you all about what this can do for you in your roles at district office. I'm really looking forward to hearing more about what this can do, specifically at the middle school and the high school level, when it comes to behavioral and learning intervention monitoring, but also then those processes, who's using it, how are they using it, how are we supporting kids in making sure that they have the supports needed? Again, both learning interventions and behavioral. Beth?
I was just going to ask about what you just talked about, Katie, was just to be able to assess our intervention strategies, right? So, that's something it seems like we'd be able to do, to find out if those strategies are working for students, rather than just continuing on something that might not be the best option for students. And then, we can make shifts as a district to address their needs. So, that's something we can do. Great.
That's a good question.
Kelly, I know you may not.
I was all focused over here.
It was, there's a lot of weight on this side of the room.
Want to bring them in?
Yeah, yeah. Dr. Henry.
Thank you, and I just want to say, this would be excellent. We've talked a lot about always wanting to focus on the whole child, and I think this way of looking at all the information, having it all in one place, would really help us individualize eventually. But I was just going to ask, as we talked about, you know, the old, well, the current, which is ECRIS, and how that pulls in, really, that focus is more on just standardized tests. So, will this replace that? Will we be getting rid of ECRIS then?
ECRIS.
ECRIS. Oh, sorry, I've been saying the wrong word. I thought it was ECRIS.
You've been around a while. It was ECRIS. You've been around a while.
Oh, my gosh. It became ECRIS.
ECRIS, sorry.
So, yes, our plan is to replace ECRIS with this. It will be a cost savings. We're going to continue this year utilizing the strategic dashboard, so that stays consistent. And then, our communications team is going to work with Dr. Wertz to really think about how we could build out a strategic plan dashboard that is community-facing as well, but we'll maintain that. And then, shifting over here, because really, when Dr. Rubenstein highlighted those insights, that is kind of the piece that ECRIS gives us, and so, this is able to do that for our summative standardized assessment data, while also adding all the other components, both closer to the classroom data, right, like curriculum-based assessments, but then also that behavioral data as well.
I'll just follow up. Is there any other programs that we're currently using that we will no longer have to use in addition to ECRIS? I heard data warehouse in there. I mean, are there other programs? And I'm thinking just as a cost-saving measure, that we can now just house with NextPath? NextPath.
Yep. So, that really, we are, one of those, as an example, is that we pay an additional amount of money to have an MTSS platform in our Embrace system. So, we wouldn't, like, right away, we would not have that. But there are additional things that we are going to recognize during the first year of use, that we'll be able to say, like, we don't need to use that anymore and have it in a separate system, and we will now just utilize that. So, yes, we anticipate additional cost savings along the line.
Any other thoughts on MTSS and NextPath?
Okay, thank you. We are now, I should be ready with my notes. Back to the, thank you for three great presentations. We're moving on to number seven, which is the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing nothing, can we please have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve, oh, sorry. Wrong one? Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, do you need this?
I move that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda items. A, personnel report. B, financial reports. C, FOIA Freedom of Information Act requests. D, First Read Section Two, Board of Education Policy Review 2260 to 2265. E, First Read Section Four, Operational Services Policy Review 415, 480, 4120, 4150. F, First Read Section Five, Personnel Policy Review 510, 520, 560, 5100. G, First Read Section Six, Instruction Policy Review 6150, 6235, 6130. H, First Read Section Seven, Students Policy Review 710, 720, 750, 760, 770, 7180, 7185, 7190, 7200, 7210, 7250, 7255, 7270, 7310, 7315, 7340. And I, First Read Section Eight, Community Relations Policy Review 830. And J, Consolidated District Plan.
Second. Thanks, Beth.
Motion made by Mrs. Hostler, second by Mrs. Assaf. Can we please call the vote?
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Assaf?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Dr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Brezner?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes, seven i's, zero n's, motion passes. Item eight is our agenda action items. We'll start with A, approval of the 2526 Salary Administrator and Non-Union Employees.
Dr. Campbell?
So, each year, the Board of Education reviews the salaries of our administrator employees and our non-union employees. The administration, under the leadership of our Human Resources Department, and Dr. Schumacher does a thorough salary analysis of our comparable districts, and we then bring recommendations to the board. Tonight, we are, have followed that same process in our review and our analysis, and we're recommending increases of administrative salaries of up to 3%, as well as other adjustments to ensure alignment with the findings of our salary analysis. With our non-union managers, supervisors, we're also in alignment with the administrators, recommending salary increases of up to 3%. It is a recommendation that all current non-union support hourly employees receive a $1 hourly increase for the upcoming 2526 school year. We've also provided in the memo outlining administrative assistance, starting salary rates as well, as well as our non-union miscellaneous hourly employees. We've provided also information regarding our food service hourly employees and those starting rates, as well as recommendations that have been made to the Board of Education.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve increases for administrators and non-union staff miscellaneous hourly rates and starting hourly rates for food service and non-union support staff as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mrs. Assaf, second by Dr. Henry. Are there any comments from the board? Seeing none, can we please call the vote?
Mrs. Assaf?
Yes.
Dr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Brezner?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes, seven i's, zero n's, motion passes. Item B is the approval of monitoring progress and taking action instructional material selection.
Okay, thank you. On May 20th, 2025, during the presentation to the Board of Ed entitled Monitoring Progress and Taking Action: Instructional Materials Selection for Adoption, the D205 Learning and Teaching Department recommended instructional materials for use in the upcoming school year 2526. These recommendations were based on data collected throughout this school year, aligned with student needs, and supported by research. The instructional materials recommendations include the following lists, or following AP, for use in the course AP United States Government and Politics at the high school level. The title of the text is American Government Stories of a Nation, second edition, by Scott Abernathy and Karen Waples. The text for use in high school EL intermediate courses is Wonder by RJ Palacios. And also, in our EL beginner course at high school, the text is Gandhi by Jane Rolison. So, the D205 Learning and Teaching tonight is recommending these resources and is seeking approval from the Board of Education.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the following instructional materials for use in the upcoming school year 2025, 2026, American Government Stories of a Nation, second edition, by Scott Abernathy and Karen Waples, Wonder by RJ Palacios, and Gandhi by Jane Rolison.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mrs. Troutman, second by Mrs. Hostler. Are there any comments from the board? Nope, and I just want to say, they've been on display, we've had this conversation, so that's why there are no likely comments from the board. Can we please call the vote?
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Assaf?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Brezner?
Yes.
Dr. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes, seven I's, zero N's. Motion passes. Item eight C is the appointment of school treasurer and resolution approving surety bond of treasurer.
So the Illinois School Code provides that each, that each Board of Education appoints a school treasurer to serve for a period of one year. With the transition of our new Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, we are bringing forth a recommendation for the Board to approve the appointment of Mr. Joseph Blomquist, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations as the school treasurer for the period of time from July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Can we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Mr. Joseph Blomquist, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations as the school treasurer for the period of time from July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second. Motion made by Dr. Henry, second by yours truly, Arvinides. Are there any comments or questions for the board? Sorry. Yours truly. Here she is. Seeing none, we will please call the vote. Dr. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Breznerhan?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Assef?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Seven I's, zero N's. Motion passes. Item eight D is the approval of IMRF Authorized Agent.
IMRF, I'm sorry, guidelines require the Board to authorize a district IMRF agent via the Board adopted resolution. And so given that our Director of Business is currently our authorized agent and the hiring and the appointment of our new Assistant Superintendent, we are bringing forth a recommendation that this responsibility be designated to our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Mr. Joseph Blomquist, effective July first, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education designate this responsibility to Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Mr. Joseph Blomquist, effective July first, twenty twenty-five. I'll second.
Motion made by Mrs. Hostler, second by Mrs. Assef. Any comments from the board? All right, can we please call the vote?
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Assef?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewinsky?
Yes.
Dr. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Breznerhan?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes, seven I's, zero N's. Motion passes.
Item E is the Jefferson and Edison Elementary School HVAC bids. And hello.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over.
The school district, we put out, we solicited bids to replace one unit at Jefferson Elementary and one unit at Edison Elementary. We had four bidders prewalk the buildings. We received two bids with the lowest qualified bid being one hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars, which was provided by Hartwig Mechanical LLC. And we're recommending the Board approve this bid.
Thank you, Brent. Can we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education award this bid to Hartwig Mechanical LLC. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Hostler, second by Mrs. Troutman. Any comments from the board? All right, can we please call the vote?
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Breznerhan?
Yes.
Dr. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Assef?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvinides?
Yes, seven I's, zero N's. The motion passes. Item nine is superintendent's communication. We have A, D-205 highlights. We do, we have several highlights. The first being our summer school update. So when we were together last in May, we were sharing the excitement in anticipation of launching our summer programming. But now we are in it. Correct, Ms. Lyons?
Yes, we're in it. So, thank you for the sentence starter, Tanya. From academics to athletics, students are having a great time at our D-205 summer programming. As you all know, District 205 offers academic and exploratory program options for students, including classes in math, reading, STEM, athletics, by literacy, and fine arts. The first session of summer programming for high school students ends this Friday. And our second session for high school students kicks off on Monday, June twenty-third, and runs until Thursday, July tenth. All other summer academic programming ends next Thursday, June twenty-sixth already. So we look forward to closing out the summer with great success. And wanted to share some amazing photos from our communications team of all the things that students are working on. And as you get a chance to view that, just a quick plug, our summer fine arts programming closes out next week with a performance featuring students in band, orchestra, choir, jazz band, and mariachi. The student performance is on Thursday, June twenty-sixth, at six-thirty at York High School, and it is free and open to the public. We encourage you to come and see our amazing students in action.
So along those lines, summer is quickly coming to an end. Who knew? Just kidding. Not coming to an end. It's going by quickly, though.
Start that over, Tanya Daniels. Start that over.
Can I get a sentence starter? So we just want to friendly remind people that, that current students still need to register for the upcoming school year. And new students can find information on our website to register for the upcoming school year, as well as the forms that are required. And we also wanted to share that some of our schools will have summer hours to come in to do registration and drop off forms. So on July fifteenth, from eight to five p.m., or on July sixteenth, from noon to seven p.m. Just a quick note that Madison students would go to Edison, Hawthorne students should go to Sandberg, and Bryan students should go to Jackson. You don't have to remember all of that. We will put it on the website. And we do want to say that our dual-language and early entrance registration has closed for the new year. And last but not least, probably in your mailbox already, if not, it's coming soon, the twelfth edition, twelfth edition, of Community Connections Newsletter. This latest edition hitting homes now is highlighting Amplify ELA, a resource that's sparking even deeper engagement and learning in our middle school English Language Arts classrooms, as Principal Lewis mentioned in his presentation. And we also take a closer look into the work of the Foundation 205, whose efforts continue to enrich the student experience in D-205 through grants, partnerships, and community support. And we're grateful to have them.
And that's it.
Okay, moving on to board communications. Are there any board members that would like to present report?
Oh, well, that was it for superintendent's update.
I'm so sorry. I told her that was it. We now move.
To communication highlights.
Communication highlights.
Next time, I'll ask Tanya.
So as part of the Community Connections Newsletter and that great story on ELA, or Amplify ELA, we wanted to share the video that goes along with that story with you.
Amplify ELA is a comprehensive, high-quality curricular resource that we utilize in our sixth through eighth grade ELA classrooms within the district. It really focuses on building students' knowledge across a variety of topics, utilizing both complex texts as well as those aligned writing tasks. And across students' middle school experience, we are really working to build that academic vocabulary as well as deepening their understanding of language structures.
With Amplify, we do a lot more small excerpts while the kids are reading. And it's kind of nice because then each lesson can focus on what they read in that excerpt. They also have a lot of differentiation tools built in with the system. So whether we have like struggling readers or like advanced students who need more of a push, they have built-in supports to just put the student on the right track, which has been nice. We write a lot. They write every day. Sometimes there's ten-minute writes. Sometimes there's short responses. We do a mixture of handwriting responses or typing responses. So no matter what day it is, there's some exposure to writing.
I feel like especially with writing, students were very hesitant to begin writing. And because we do it daily, they are much more comfortable and they start writing right away.
It's not a shock to them if we expect them to write a hundred words every day. And I think because of that, their ability to write longer and to just accept that that's what we're doing has improved.
Amplify ELA has really, I think, opened our eyes to how strong reading and writing can interact when used well together. We have these really high-quality reading materials now, complex text sets that are students, not just at the level that they come into us at, but at the grade level. And students are rising to meet that challenge. And now we're writing not just to learn how to write, but writing to learn. And I think that's really taken us to a new place because now the, the reading and the writing are combined in a way that they both feed off of each other, and our students are growing stronger as a result.
Amplify really allows kids to dig into texts and really experience these, these reading and writing, speaking and listening tasks throughout the day to really think more critically and deeper about the literature that's in front of them. They have a lot of different opportunities to show their learning through, you know, whether that's through discussions, through Socratic seminars, really helping to disseminate that information in a variety of ways that's relevant to their life.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to board communications, board members, any, anybody want to present a report? Share any information with the full board? Okay, we'll move on to upcoming meetings. July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, the Board of Education will meet at seven p.m. here at District 205 Center. And on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Board of Education will meet at seven p.m. here at District 205 Center. With that, it is nine o'clock on the dot, and we are adjourned.